Yes. Christina, you set to start?
Yes.
Okay, then if everyone is ready, I would like to call the meeting to order. Welcome. I would like to welcome everyone joining us remotely via Zoom. My fellow school committee members and administrators in this forum, if you wish to speak, please state your name before you speak so that Mrs. Medici can put your information in the minutes correctly. Also, Chris, Michelle, Jen, and Justin, when making or seconding a motion, please state your name as well so that we will have that in the minutes correctly, and then I will do a roll call vote. Anyone that is going to ask a question in chat or the people on the phones, iPads, or computers, please state your name and address so that we will have that information correctly as well. And Michelle, if you wouldn't mind keeping an eye on the chat for me, I feel that's an important that we, you know, read those and possibly respond if we need to.
Lynn, before you start, just people just putting in, you know, is everybody in, is everybody in? I just want somebody to be able to confirm that we have everybody in the meeting.
Everyone, if they're identifiable, are in, as far as I know, are in the meeting. If they're not identifiable, they will not be let in.
Okay.
Currently, nobody in, there's nobody in the waiting room currently. Everyone that's been, that's tried to get in is in the meeting.
Perfect. And.
Okay, all right, no, they just says several cannot get in because they rejected Zoom, doesn't let them in again, even if they changed their name and profile picture.
I'm not showing, I, I just admitted Lisa O'Brien, but I'm not showing anybody else in the waiting room.
Okay, all right.
Oh, wait, here comes a few more.
Feedback is, is this, this should have been clear before the meeting, which I think we're just figuring this out ourselves, as it's been a long time since we've done this.
Well, we've never had so many people log in that didn't have a name.
Same time, right, right, so we just need to be a little patient with us on this one.
Yep. And after having our meeting being hacked, Michelle, um, I'm not tolerating that. So if that happens again, we are shutting it down ASAP.
Yeah, yes, we have had remote meetings for over a year, but we haven't done them for quite a while. So we just asked everybody to just please be patient. Thank you.
Yep. But I am letting in, as soon as I see anyone, I'm letting them in. But I don't see anyone in the, in the waiting room right now.
Okay. All right, policy, B E D H, public comment at school committee meetings. All regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statute to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee desires individuals to attend its meeting so that they may become better acquainted with the operations and the programs of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear public comments. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It's an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority.
Lynn, I'm sorry to interrupt, I really am, but the things that are being typed in this chat, I just want to set this down that, you know, the people feel that there's tons of people that can't get back in because they were denied, and they feel that this is purposeful. I just, I just need to put that out there because this is not purposeful. We're just trying to get the right people in, to have the names and everything. We just want to be careful that we're not having the situation we had before.
Correct, and, and that is why, anyone that did not have a name to their, and I said that right up front, anyone that is not identifiable is not going to be, we're removing them. Um, and, and we have that right, so I'm really sorry, then they can set up another account under Zoom and go that route if that's what they choose to do, but I'm not having people in this meeting that are identifiable.
Why is it that if they're denied to come in, then they can't come back in? What, what is the?
That's a Zoom issue, I guess that's not my issue, I don't know.
I know, I'm just asking because I really don't know.
I, I don't know, I, but I, I removed them from the chat, I mean, from the, the entry list because they were not identifiable.
And now we're getting requests to start a new meeting and that this is against the open meeting law. I just, I'm sorry to do this, but I just, I want to make sure we're addressing this before we go forward.
No, I don't think it's a violation of the open meeting law, you can't identify yourself as who you are.
I think the argument is, is that if they get booted out, they can't get back in. And so that would be a violation of that because they don't have the, the clear opportunity to get in. I understand, believe me, I get it, I just, I just don't know.
Mrs. Whitaker, if they go in and they change their name or they change their account, they can, they can get back in, correct? Yeah, and that's what we've been told, they, they, they have to be identifiable.
And they can log back in after?
That's what I've been told.
Yes, and we've done that even in the classrooms, I mean, you know, we Zoom, we did a lot of remote learning last year.
You don't let anybody in that's not identifiable, and that's the policy we've had since we started Zoom almost two years ago.
Okay, yeah, people are just saying they don't know that, to come back in, so.
Yeah, you can certainly come back in anytime, you can certainly do that.
So if you have, I would say, if you have somebody that got kicked out, if you can, you can message them, tell them to log back in.
All we're trying to do is just keep the meeting safe, that's, that's all.
Yep, and we have had history where we've had to shut our meetings down because of inappropriate behavior, and so we're just, we're avoiding.
Identifiable is just with a name, so we know that, we can look at it and know that's a name. We get some people that put like, you know, some hashtag or a phone number, we don't know who it is. And everybody's asking for a new meeting. And, and why we did this was so that we could let all these people in, because we knew that it would be difficult for everybody to get to the school. I don't know if anybody.
I would just say that it's unfortunate because I think, um, I would really like to hear what Superintendent Raich has to say. I think that everybody in this meeting that's on would really like to hear what Superintendent Raich has to say. So now we're, uh, you know, we're in a bind because I thought we were going to be a good place.
Um, and I understand some people, they're saying they should have, they should have been informed, and we apologize for that. I mean, I think this is just as we're going in, we're realizing that we needed to say that. So we'll give apologies for not having that instructions beforehand. We are, we are filming this meeting, so this meeting can be shared afterwards, is that correct?
Yes, we're, yes, this meeting's being recorded, this meeting can, is going to be shared afterwards. I personally, in the next two weeks, cannot reschedule another school committee meeting, vacation is next week. Um, so if those that are here, they want to hear about the mask mandate, tonight's the night, or.
Well, some people are asking about people voting, but people, we don't have voting, do we?
No, the only people that vote are the five members of the school committee, um, yeah.
Just want to make that clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we will continue our meeting, and, and those that want to stay can stay, those that want to go can go.
Thank you, I just wanted to address that, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
So I think you have just one, I see one person in the waiting room identified as Galaxy S8. Can we just admit them and I'll put it into the chat saying you need to identify yourself?
That's fine, you give them two minutes, they don't identify themselves, they're gone.
Okay.
Say identify as a name, we just need your name, because identify, some people might not understand what you mean.
Okay, I'll, I'll put that in the chat now.
Okay, this is taking way too much away from the actual meeting.
All right, Lynn, you're on, go.
All right. Uh, next on the agenda, approval of minutes, I need a motion to approve the January 25th regular session minutes as presented.
Chris, so moved.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jen, are there any comments, questions, concerns regarding those minutes? Seeing none, okay, Michelle?
I have to abstain, I was absent from the meeting.
Chris?
Just nice, I.
Jen?
Jen, I.
Justin?
Justin, I.
I'm an I as well, thank you. Next up, I need a motion to approve and hold the January 25th executive session minutes as presented.
Jen, so moved.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, are there any comments, questions, or concerns regarding those? Seeing none, Michelle?
Abstained.
Chris?
Chris, I.
Jen?
Jen, I.
Justin?
Justin, I.
I'm an I as well. Okay, um, committee reports. King Philip?
So nothing to report at this time, I wasn't able to make last Monday's meeting.
Thank you. Negotiations, I have nothing to report at this time. Um, budget, we met last week, we have started the process of the FY 2023 budget process. Um, it's going to be a work in progress, but we will get together later and come up on the date to meet again. Communications?
Yeah, just a quick update, especially given the hot topics, you know, with tonight with the mask mandate, we've been highly encouraging everyone to attend tonight's meeting. I'm, I'm happy, I mean, despite the challenges that we've been having, we didn't anticipate the naming situation, but I am happy that we were able to hold this meeting via Zoom, given that so many are highly vested in this discussion. We have been reaching out, asking parents in the community to reach out to us prior to the meeting tonight so that we can get a feel for everyone's opinion on the mandate. And I am pleased to report that we have received so many emails regarding this. And we have said this before, and again, I think we all apologize for the confusion here, but we do want to encourage everyone to let us know their thoughts on these matters. If we don't hear from you, then we don't know. So not just for tonight's meeting, but for every meeting, please, we encourage everyone to attend and we encourage everyone to reach out to us at any time. And we have, I did post all of our emails on, in one of the posts from, I think, yesterday, the day before, just so everyone has our emails handy so that they can reach out to us.
Real quickly, Christine, can you let in that Galaxy phone, I know who it is, S H, she's just having trouble changing the name, but she's a parent, yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Jen. I mean, thank you, Jen, Sick leave?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you, wellness?
Me, I cannot see the Galaxy anymore, can someone else let them in?
I had let them in originally, I don't know.
Okay, I just want to make sure they're all set. Wellness report, I don't have anything, Anne, do you have anything to add in?
Not at this time, we made the announcement the last meeting, and there has been no further action other than Tracy Delgrasso, Dot Pearl, and Dave Murphy contacting Lowe's, and we're waiting for their support so that we can organize the May 4th walk to school, that's it for now.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you, Anne.
Mrs. Shop, regionalization committee?
Well, we met on our first meeting, and we elected Bruce Kate as the chair, he was very happy to do so. Um, and we had, I mean, we talked basically about what was the direction that we wanted the committee to go in? What was, what was the purpose of the committee? And we had talked about different questions that we wanted to ask. I had shared with everyone, the Desi, basically, step by step, if you're looking at regionalization, the things that need to happen. Um, and we're going to be meeting again this month and then next month. Um, but right now, it's just really just like, okay, how do we attack this? Where are we going with this? What are the questions, who we need to speak to, things of that nature, because this is all, you know, very new for everybody, so. That's it.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. Do you want to move the mask forward? We can do that at this time.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair, that we advance the mask gender item to the current item.
Thank you. Stephanie, are you prepared to do that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second, did somebody second? With Mr. Alexander, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It, I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Jen, thank you.
Whispered it.
The voice is still coming.
We had a double second, we were, we were well covered.
Hi, Mrs. Whitaker, are you all set to put a document on the screen for everyone to see? That I will go through?
Yes.
Okay. And so if you could advance to the next page, please. Okay. So what you see on this, on this page is just a brief statement that I've made with regard to how we've been looking at face covering policy throughout the year. Just, I'll read it very quickly, the Plainville Public Schools has and continues to base its face mask, face covering use policy on guidance provided by the Center for Disease Control, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. It also consults with the Plainville Board of Health on a regular basis. So given the information that was recently, the announcement made recently by Governor Baker and Commissioner Riley with regard to lifting the state mask requirement as of Monday, February 28th, and after I've consulted with the Office of Plainville Health Department and our own nursing staff, I am recommending to the school committee tonight that masks or face coverings no longer be required in school buildings or on school grounds with the following exceptions. Masks, face coverings remain a requirement on all school buses, that's a federal requirement, so we are not in a position to relax that. Staff and students who return to school after a five-day isolation and/or quarantine period must wear a mask or face covering for an additional five days, except when they are eating, drinking, or outdoors. So that's something that has been in place, and I think it's best that we continue to do so going forward. And staff and students must wear a face mask, a mask or face covering upon entry to the school nurse health office. Uh, I will indicate that I did hear from our nurses late today with regard to the last one. They feel comfortable, uh, that it not be a requirement, but something that could happen if there was a need to do so in terms of entering the school nurse or health office. Uh, I'm, I'm fine with that, I, I always think that the nurses are the best ones to make that call. If they think there is a sufficient reason for a student or staff member to put a mask on before entering the school nurse's office, I, I leave it to them to make that decision, I feel very comfortable with that. I don't think it's a requirement as long as they're aware of why that person is entering the office. And then I also put here, additionally, any individual who wishes to continue to mask, including someone who faces higher risk from COVID-19, is allowed to do so and should not be questioned. While I am pleased to make this recommendation tonight, I also understand that they may, there may be students or staff who wish to continue to wear masks, and they should be allowed to do so without comment, that, that is their right to do so, and they should be allowed to do that. Before we go on to actually showing you what this would like, look like at a policy, I did want to mention one other thing, and if you could go up to the next page, please, Mrs. Whitaker. Um, as many of you know, we do have a test at home program. At the present time, about 61% of our staff participate in this program. And just below 47%, just below 50% of our families as of last Friday also participate in this program. So we have a number of individuals who are participating in the test and stay program, okay? This week, earlier this week, they received their test kits that will be good for the February vacation and also for this week in the February vacation. We also intend to, Thursday this week, to send another test kit home to those students and staff. And it is our hope that those individuals will use this additional test on Sunday, February 27th. So I was very concerned after we returned from the December break, we had a high number of COVID cases in the month of January and continuing to February. My hope is that people do test on that Sunday, the end of the vacation period, so that we know that they are safe to come back to school. With that, um, I would go on and actually share with the school committee and with those in the audience, the policies. So if you could go to the next page, please, Mrs. Whitaker. This is a copy of the policy that I'm recommending that contains the elements that I just referenced, but I'll give everybody the opportunity to, uh, to read it for themselves. The one change I would make here, and again, this goes along with what I just mentioned about the school nurse office, I would, uh, recommend that we change that line from masks will be required in, in all school nurse health offices to masks may be required in all school nurse health offices.
Mrs. Caparella, we have a couple of questions about the document in the chat, just, I don't know if you want me to hold until the end, or?
Yeah, um, I think you can hold.
To just, to this actual document.
Um, what are they asking, Michelle?
Uh, one is asking, why does it say that unvaccinated are not required? And the other is asking why the mention of individuals who are vaccinated, how about individuals who aren't? It's a little similar.
There is a paragraph that, that references those who are not, uh, not vaccinated.
And that's that it's strongly recommended but not required for them.
That's correct.
So basically, nobody's required, as I read this, it's just separated two O.
Correct.
Like when you go to the store and they have a sign that says it's strongly recommended, but if you don't want to, you don't have to.
I think, Madam Chair, if I may, the, I think the separation there is that, you know, people who are unvaccinated, it's still strongly recommended, and we're, we're establishing that as a point in this policy. And then for individuals who are vaccinated, have the increase, so we're just saying they're not required. So I think that's the separation of the two, but ultimately, it's personal choice and parental choice, am I correct, Mr. Raich?
Absolutely, that's correct.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, Michelle, are we all set?
Um, yeah, we just, uh, some comments that are just concerned about the fact that, um, you know, vaccinated, unvaccinated people spread COVID. And, um, there was a concern about an anti-bullying policy regarding masks. So if students choose to continue to wear, they should be protected by policy. So I think that's just, everybody has a little concern with how we're vaccinated, unvaccinated.
Right, and that is something we will need to monitor, we will need to make sure that nobody is bullied, that's a choice that they have.
And we also have a bullying policy in place, and this would fall under that.
Right, and I agree with the last comment, nobody should be bullied, period.
No, exactly.
Mask or no mask.
Correct.
And I do want to reiterate what Mr. Raich did say just a few minutes ago, that, um, that no one should be questioned, you know, it, it gets up to parent choice. If a child is coming to the school or a staff member wants to wear a mask, if they feel that's the best choice for them, it's not going to be questioned. And again, like Mrs. Caparella just said, we do have a, uh, anti-bullying policy in place, but that would fall under that.
Yes, we do, and also, everyone needs to be a little more kind and compassionate towards one another. Um, the other thing, actually, at this time, I would like to, to say is that, um, we've received several emails regarding this, um, and, and we've read them all. We were not able to reply to all of them, especially those that came in at the 11th hour. Um, but I also want, there was a lot of questions comparing us to King Philip, and I'd like to talk a little bit about that at this time. Um, although we are part of KP's district at the elementary level, we are not part of KP's district. King Philip has their own set of policies and procedures that they follow, we, we don't follow those. Plainville Public Schools has their own policies and procedures, we do our own. Um, when it comes to COVID, there's been, um, Desi guidance that has talked about the high school, middle school, the vaccination rates, um, and the 80%, if, if they reach the 80% of vaccination rates, they can unmask. That does not, uh, fall to the elementary level, there's no guidance for us on that. Um, so, you know, there, there's two different pieces, they, as you say. Um, so we are, we're following the elementary level for Plainville Public Schools.
Yeah, I think it's just, um, the language, um, you know, a comment had been asked, and we remove the unvaccinated commentary from the document to avoid confusion, and that's been a couple of people's similar, um, overall. I do want to respond that someone had thought that, do you please say vaccinated, unvaccinated, it seems like a segregation thing, but that's not. I know this is the language that came from the Mass Association for School Committee, so I don't know how people feel about that last bit, but people think it's confusing to put the unvaccinated commentary.
So this is Chris, if I could speak. I'd just like to say, um, I think there is, I you, in that statement, as written, it does differentiate between vaccinated and unvaccinated, it's not discriminatory. There's data behind it, you can go to the CDC if you want to read, um, the scientific studies around it. But the vaccines are effective against the original strain as well as Delta. Obviously, Omicron was a different animal that came through, different variant. But I think there is, I, I think, as written, I support it. The only change that I would recommend is aligning with the, uh, the nurse's commentary from, that you mentioned earlier, Mr. Raich.
Yeah. Thank you, Chris.
You know, just our commentary, Madam Chair, if I may.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I do see a lot of the comments, and, uh, you know, it, it, obviously, we can't reply to every single one of them, but, you know, if, if these two paragraphs regarding the vaccinated, unvaccinated are a point of contention, obviously, we set the policy and with the superintendent's guidance. Is there a plus or a minus to just taking it into one paragraph and just say that it's strongly recommended for vaccinated or unvaccinated or otherwise immunocompromised, and just say, hey, you know, we strongly recommend it, but it's not required for everybody, basically, and, and leave it at that? I mean, that would cover everybody, they're all one paragraph, no separation, everybody should wear a mask if they want, it's recommended, it might help you, but if you don't want to, we don't force you.
I would agree with Justin to make that change. That way, that people, it, we may not mean it to be that way, but if people are feeling that way, then it's having that effect, and we don't want to have that.
And we still get the same outcome, we're still going to have, you know, we strongly recommend it, that's some CDC guidance, and people can, we're not here to debate that stuff. But in the end, we're dropping the mask requirement and still strongly recommending it as the current science follows, but in the end, it's people's choice.
So you're, so just to be clear, so you'd be recommending taking out that second piece, individuals who are vaccinated are not required to wear a mask?
Yeah, take out the, the short line of statute, individuals, and just add, uh, unvac, add vaccinated to the first paragraph. So it's, you'd have three, vaccinated, unvaccinated, or otherwise immunocompromised. And there's just one paragraph, and it covers everybody. I mean, you can almost just say strongly recommend that everyone. You could, I mean, if you really want to simplify it, but I understand breaking it out and showing that we're looking at it. But in one paragraph.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with including it all in one paragraph, that's.
No, no, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, I mean, I understand. Yeah, I'm I'm fine with that. I mean, I understand. It's, I understand the document as presented, it's saying we're removing the mandate, parent choice, if you want your child to wear it or you don't, either way. Um, the first paragraph is just kind of reiterating what the CDC is saying. But when it, uh, when it comes down to it, it is parent choice. And I think we're kind of all saying the same thing. If that makes it clearer for the parents to see, uh, you know, I'm fine with that. Uh, either way, it's kind of saying the same thing, but if that makes it clear so that the community will understand what we're going for tonight. Uh, you know, I'm fine.
I mean, I very much support this policy and this move and, but I don't see the harm of the paragraph. In the end, everybody's getting their choice. And that's what I think the majority of people in this call want.
I absolutely agree with you.
Justin, could, Justin, could you just read the statement as it would? So I want to make sure I get this perfectly.
All right, I'll try to do this on the fly. Bear with me. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth is strongly recommended to be worn by individuals who are vaccinated, unvaccinated, or who are otherwise immunocompromised in school buildings and on school grounds, even when the social distancing is observed.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure.
No problem.
And I, um, I do, if I can just take a minute, I just want to reiterate what I said back in August or September, um, whenever we first enacted the mask mandate. You know, I still think it's so strange that it is up to individual school committees to be making healthcare decisions, but here we are. And with that being said, I did spend a good amount of time speaking with our two school nurses this weekend. Um, asking them, you know, their thoughts on this, if they think it's the right time, all these different questions, my concerns over that our youngest students remain still ineligible. So even if their parents weren't comfortable with this, I discussed that with them. The issues that our staff might have trying, you know, does it fall on them to maintain a list of, you know, these children, their parents want it, and these kids, they don't have to wear it anymore, everything like that. Uh, but we're not doing, yeah, I think we need to make that very clear. We're not removing the ability to wear masks if someone wants to. And to make that very clear, if you want your child to continue to wear masks, you can continue to do so. And I think Mr. Raish touched on this just a few minutes ago. I did have a concern over the timing because it's right after uh, school vacation week. I'm not saying I didn't want that to happen, but that was just a concern of mine. And I did discuss that with our school nurses. And one of the big things they said is, you know, they're, they really want, excuse me, more kids to sign up for that at home testing. So, you know, I really, really don't want to have to go back to a mask mandate. I want to be done with it just as much as everyone else. Um, so if we can just encourage everyone, more people to sign up for that so that we can prevent any possible surgeries that might be coming in the future. I think that's a very important thing to point out. Um, and I do want to thank all the parents that did send us emails that are putting these comments. And like I said earlier, if you don't, if we don't hear from you, then we don't know. Um, but I just wanted to let everyone know, all those concerns that I had, I did discuss with our nurses and they both feel that the time is right to remove.
Um, Lynn, if I'd like to move forward to make, uh, the vote, we're discussing kind of the policy, but we haven't taken the actual vote. So I think for most of the people that are on here, that's what they're waiting for.
Thank you. I didn't want to cut you off, but I agree with you. I think it's time. So I need a motion to approve the face covering policy as is um, presented with the changes that Justin had, um, asked to make for us.
So moved.
Michelle's second.
Thank you. Are there any more comments, questions, concerns from my committee members? If there are none, um, Michelle?
I.
Chris?
Chris, I.
Ben?
Jen, I.
Justin?
Justin, I.
I'm an I as well.
Um, there was one thing that was posted, uh, Lynn, that I just want to make clear is that some people are afraid that they send their children in with the mask, you know, if they're taking the bus. And then they come in with it. Um, how do they make sure if they don't want to wear it, that they don't feel like they have to? And, um, I think that that's a communication that I would tell parents to have with the teacher and make it clear that, you know, so and so is bringing their mask in because they're on the bus, but I don't want them wearing it in the classroom. Now, of course, the child's older, they can have that conversation, but the little guys, so.
Thanks, Michelle.
This is going to be communication and a new, this is our new world. Unfortunately, we're getting back to a new version of what life used to be, and it's going to take some time to adjust. And I think everybody's going to be patient, work with the staff the best they can, but patience, please.
Yeah, and nobody's going to force anybody to wear anything, but I understand that little guys, they will just put it on because, well, they've been used to it, so.
It's all they've known.
Yeah. That's all, they've been in school and they've always had a mask on. So that's why I would just say to parents, just please communicate with your, uh, classroom teachers.
Um, there's a couple of comments, Madam Chair, just about when this takes effect. I don't think we actually covered that, just so everybody can know.
Upon return from February
February 28th. Yep.
What was recommended?
All right. So that that's how I view it is that's when it, it takes effect when we come back 28th, correct, Dave?
Correct.
Yeah, we have, we're not taking a vote to extend it. So we, we all agree as voting I that it's the 28th.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Let's go back to item number seven.
Uh, just before you go forward, people are asking, um, are we, how about the other protocols that are in place? I know we're just voting on the masks right now, but they are asking about the six feet and, you know, will those still be in place and you know, let Mr. Raish answer that.
No, I mean, the, the, those won't still be in place. I mean, I, I think everyone's going to take some time just to get used to that too. I mean, just like we all are. I mean, uh, some of us may have been in places where mass mandates were relaxed and, and some people feel comfortable being closer, some don't. I think that'll take some getting used to, but I do expect that in classrooms, kids will get closer together. But I mean, I also want to keep in mind, we are in winter time. Uh, there's a lot of coughing and colds and flu that's still around too. It's just not COVID. So I mean, it's just good health practices that we want to ensure still happen in classrooms. Kids still need to wash hands and all of that good stuff should, should continue. But no, we're not going to say, okay, you know, you're, you're too close, you know, you're within six feet. So we can start to get back to more of a normal, uh, school environment. Switching some of the furniture may take a little time. Took us a while to get it there, but and it'll take some undoing, but hopefully we can continue to go in that direction over the next month.
So generally there's not COVID restrictions, Mr. Raish, it's just good hygiene practices?
Yes.
And getting it back to normal as normal can be.
Right, right.
Yeah, this all sounds like absolutely wonderful news. I think this is the, what the community wanted. This is what everyone seemed to want, so.
I like I always thought it was funny that washing your hands was like a unique thing, a novelty. So I hope it doesn't go away. We continue to wash our hands.
All right.
Thank you.
Have some volunteers to move the furniture if you needed in the community.
Okay. I have lost my connection. If I can ask for a quick moment.
Okay.
I'm back on. Thank you.
All right, we ready for personnel? Mrs. Caparella?
Yes, Mr. Raish, please.
Okay, two resignations, uh, to let you know about. Tanya Holland, the acting school business administrator, uh, has submitted a resignation, uh, to the district and also Tracy Bromley, one of our food service, uh, workers, who has, who has left and she's moved to another state. Uh, there's been a few appointments. Courtney LeVake, who is one of our food service workers, has moved from the two hour a day position to the five hour a day, uh, position that Tracy Bromley held. And so we're now in the process of backfilling Tracy's two hour a day position. And then there were also the names of those teachers and paraprofessionals who will be working in next week's Math Acceleration Academy program that will be running Tuesday through Friday. Uh, Mrs. Hoyle will serve as the facilitator coach for the academy. Mrs. Vine will work with some of our grade three students, Mrs. Namath with some of our fourth grade students, Mrs. Adams with some of our fifth grade students. Uh, Mrs. Cartier with some of our sixth grade students and, uh, Mr. Eaton will serve as one of the instructional pairs. Uh, there are a few more, uh, that I met with Mrs. RP today, and there are a few more pairs, and we're just looking, uh, to fill one more position. Uh, but we're looking forward to that happening next week. So those are all of our personnel moves, uh, for the past few weeks.
Um, Mr. Raish, may I ask, how's, how's the, um, overall attendance for it? Do, did you get some good numbers or?
Well, they, they asked that you limit participation to between, between 10 and 12 students. I think our average per class is 11 at this, at this point. So we're, we're very pleased that we have 44 kids that will be coming in for the, for the week. And, uh, I'm sure it'll be a good experience if it's anything like we had with the language arts uh, this summer, and then we will run another one again in April, uh, because we did receive grant funds to run two sessions. So we look forward to, forward to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Steve. Superintendent's report?
Okay, so I did share with you, as I have been, just some attendance figures, uh, and I was pleased to see at the beginning of, for the first few weeks in February, our attendance is starting to bounce back a bit. Obviously, as I mentioned earlier, we had lots of COVID cases after the December, uh, break. And so you saw January, uh, was our lowest student attendance month, uh, of the year. But we are starting to rebound and so that's certainly the direction we want to continue to go in. So I will continue to update you throughout the year uh, in terms of student attendance, especially as it relates to, uh, kids being out or staff being out with, uh, with COVID. Uh, I also gave you some updated information about the at home rapid antigen testing. We have about 70 staff members and 284 students that participate in the program. That was as of last week. I also mentioned the extra test kits that will go home this week that we're encouraging staff in families to use on the Sunday before kids and staff return from February vacation. Um, I did provide you with some updated information on, uh, which is also available on our website with the numbers of cases. Um, we're hoping that February continues to be a good month and certainly, uh, stays far below what we saw in January with regard to the number of cases. Let's see, next, um, this next item may sound familiar. You might remember that about four or six weeks ago, uh, I came to you because we had to do some shuffling of funds with regard to maintenance of effort, and that has to do with uh, federal funds and one of our federal funding sources supports special education. And the requirement to continue to get those funds from the federal government is that you don't diminish or lessen the amount of money that you spend on special education students. And when we were dealing with the 20% cut on our budget, they noticed that it appeared that we were spending less on special needs students. So we had to spend some time and we had to reallocate the funding sources until we were able to get our special education spending up to par for fiscal year 20. We're going to need to do the same thing again with regard to fiscal year 21. Uh, we basically have to look at expenditures totaling approximately $134,000. And we have to basically go through the effort of shifting how those activities were paid for in order to show that we're not relying on federal funds instead of relying on town funds. Uh, and I, I use the analogy of a little bit of a shell game. Unfortunately, that's what this has become when we were working with such diminished resources, but we will go through the, actually next week, that's something that I'll be working on uh, in order to be able to respond to the Department of Ed, uh, because if we're not able to shift the sources, then basically the Department of Ed would have a right on behalf of the federal government to tell us that we have to pay back those funds. But I'm confident we will be able to do, shift those funds going forward. But obviously that's one of the concerns when budgets get cut substantially is making sure that you're meeting all the requirements. Uh, not only local requirements, but state and federal requirements, but we'll get that done. I just wanted to make you sure. Make sure you were aware of that and probably at the next meeting, I will come back with a recommendation for how, where those funds get shifted from and to. The bottom line is it's not additional dollars. It's just a matter of reallocating, uh, which resources paid for what. Okay. And then the last thing was just the, a little bit more information on the, on the Math Acceleration Academy program. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Okay, up next. Well, business discussion of FY 23 budgets.
Okay, just a, a little bit of an update. Uh, we did have a budget subcommittee meeting last Thursday. Um, and that was, uh, Mrs. Caparella, uh, Mrs. Sharp, myself, uh, Tanya Holland, and then the, uh, principals and other administrators, and that's where each principal had the, and each administrator has the opportunity to present uh, their request to the budget subcommittee for consideration in the determination of the fiscal year 23 budget. So, uh, Mrs. Roberts Pratt presented the Wood School budget. Uh, Mrs. Robbins had submitted the Jackson budget, which I presented on her behalf. Dr. Dogon presented the, uh, special education budget. Uh, Stephanie Whitaker presented the technology budget. I also presented the maintenance custodial budget and the administration section of the budget too. And it, basically it's presenting the needs, uh, the all of the administrators, including myself, in their presentation also included uh, any additional staff that we thought would be necessary to address learning loss and learning gaps. We certainly understand that once the town provides guidance to us about the resources that will be available to support the budget, that all of those positions may not be included in the budget going forward. But we did feel it was responsibility to present to the school committee what we felt were the needs, uh, that would best serve the students. Since that time, uh, and during that night, which lasted, I think about four hours told, all told, um, there were a number of questions raised. There were a number of things that we discussed. Um, and so we have been making some adjustments, uh, to the budget, uh, double checking certain figures, adding other things in the budget that may have been overlooked, removing some duplication. And so we've been doing some house cleaning over the past week in, in terms of that. Uh, I did spend some time on Jackson's budget too, and I went back. Uh, and I did have done some revisions to that budget to put it in line with the, the guidance documents that we provided to everybody. I also have worked on some cost projections. So if, if any position that uh, you may see in the version of the budget going forward is a new position. Uh, I'm also showing you projections for the costs for any additional staffing. Uh, and also we're in the process, I'm working with Tanya in the process of, of saying, even if we were level funded, level staffing, what do we anticipate the projected increase for that to be going forward, just based upon contractual increases or projected contractual increases? So that's all work that's going on right now. We'll continue. Uh, I have two budget subcommittee meetings next week, Tuesday and Friday. We will review the work that we've been doing this week, um, and having more conversations. And that's typically where the budget subcommittee starts the process of prioritizing the needs. So if there is not enough funds to support all the needs, which are those who, that we feel are most pressing and should go forward? That all leads up to the public hearing on March 8th. On March 8th is the evening where the budget subcommittee presents to the full school committee what they're recommending for budget consideration. Uh, I will also mention the fact that the Monday we return after vacation, I will be meeting, uh, with Mrs. I will be meeting with Mrs. Roberts Pratt, Dr. Dogon, and Mrs. Kefington, who's the acting principal here at Jackson. And we will be looking specifically at the special education program for next year. One of the things we heard that evening last week is the increased need for special education staff in a variety of areas. So I want to make sure that we spend a little bit more time digging into that information. We're going to look at each program. We've looked at the projected staffing for that program as well as the projected roster of students that will be participating in the program. I just need to make sure that we spend more time going through that. So I have accurate and good information to bring back to the budget subcommittee and ultimately to the full school committee. So it's starting to get very busy with regard to budgets and will continue to do so for the next month or so, leading up to the public hearing. I don't know, Mrs. Sharp, or Mrs. Caparella, if you have anything else that you wanted to add.
No, Dave, I don't.
The only thing I would add is just that going through all the the presentations that we saw from the principals from different departments, from technology, from special ed. There's a lot of need and there isn't a lot of money. And that's a grave concern because this I don't really feel there was anything that was brought forward that I said, oh, yeah, we probably don't need that. We needed all of it. So I'm very concerned about where that's going to leave us as we go forward. I know, as we said, we're going to prioritize and look at that. But there are just so many things that we have lost over the years that we we just need to get as much back. And right now, it's not about even getting back. It's like just trying to hang on and maintain where we are.
The other thing I would add, and we did spend some time looking at projected revenue going forward. Specifically, as it relates to state and federal monies. We do anticipate a slight decrease next year in terms of state and federal monies of about thirty thousand dollars. And while our prime focus is on the fiscal year twenty-three budget. We did raise the concern and want people to be aware that there will be a substantial decrease in federal funds starting in fiscal year twenty-four. That's when the S R monies will be gone. And the S R monies and other COVID-related federal funds have really filled a lot of holes these past two years. And they will continue to fill some holes next year. But after that, it's going to be an extreme challenge going forward. Could well lose well over two hundred thousand dollars in in state and federal monies going forward. Because that's how much how much it's been boosted up the last few few years. So that's just it's down the road, but it's not that far down the road that it's not something we should be thinking about to come forward.
Yeah, and Mr. H, I just want to, I mean, that I think that point is huge. And I hope we can like reiterate that as we get closer to the town meeting. So that people are aware that this is the reality of the situation. Those funds aren't always going to be available for us. Just to keep the community aware, to reiterate it as much as we can.
I mean, and also that some communities, when they received the S R funds, they were able to supplant and add programming. I know that I work in a district that took advantage of that and added a lot more. Us was just to bring back some of what we lost, but we didn't get all the way there. So when we lose that money. We're going back to the cuts that we had to make before. We won't have the financial means to keep those positions and and programs in place. So it's not about, oh, the money's going and, you know, we're not going to have a lot. It's, oh, wait a minute, we're going to lose some more. And that's just not okay.
Yeah, this is Chris. To that point, I know you've done a nice job putting together the data on where we fell on a lot of the the math and the language arts testing and and we've slipped and we've slipped below some in some cases below the state average. So I think it would be an opportunity there to show when we when we staff appropriately and we have those robust programs that we do see those numbers improve. We do deliver a better education for our students. So if we could put that into a presentation form, that they that might be very helpful in the in a public hearing hearing form. So I think there's some value. Those numbers are powerful to me at least in primary.
Is anyone else? Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm moving on. Does anyone have any legislative update? I do not. Any item that is not anticipated time of the posting, I have the superintendent search that didn't get put on the agenda earlier, so I'm going to talk about it here. At our last meeting, we voted to use M A S C. But then it was asked if we received three bids, which we did not. So we had Tanya reach out to vendors. We got three bids back. The proposals that came back was one was from M A S C. That was the first one at ten-five. It does not include any printing or promotional materials, any advertising or travel and accommodations for the candidates. In addition, postage for distribution of recruiting materials, you know, if we utilize those. The consultant expenses and travel costs would not exceed fifteen hundred dollars. But now most districts are using electronic distribution for all their materials so that that price would be, you know, cut down. The next proposal we looked at was NESTAC, which is New England School and Development, the council. Their comprehensive search was very similar to M A S Cs. The lowest that they came in at was twelve thousand dollars to start, but it could go up to twenty thousand dollars. And then the last firm that we looked at was Greenwood Asher and Associates. And generally, their service is based on a third of the total of the first year's estimated cash compensation for the individual that will be employed. But with the minimum fee of not to be under sixty thousand dollars. So that or whichever is highest, but at that cost, we can't afford to do that either. So we took the vote. We're going to continue with M A S C moving forward because it is the cheapest. I don't know if any of you have any more questions, concerns regarding that. But I did want to inform you of that. Seeing none. The next thing, I did speak to Jim Hardy today. He apologized and was in the car, so we are going to have a conversation tomorrow. But I did want to talk to you about comprising the superintendent search committee. What we had done in the past, and I had talked to Jim again today and was correct. Is our list in the past had comprised been comprised of eleven individuals with two alternates. And the alternates would fill in is if somebody that was on the original eleven could not fulfill their obligation for some reason or another. So he suggested that we continue to use that. So I will give you the breakdown that we used that in the past and you can let me know what your thoughts are. We did two specialists. One teacher, one was a para. We did a wood school teacher, a Jackson school teacher, one administrator, a wood school parent, a Jackson school parent, a community member, and two school committee members, along with the PTO member. And then there were two alternates that were chosen as well. So I don't know what your thoughts are on that. So I'll be looking for feedback.
Lynn, how many people total? You you said it. I I'm sorry, I didn't write it down.
There'd be eleven people with two alternates and the alternates Michelle would cover if someone else got sick. But they would all have to attend all the sessions and the interviews and in order to have a final vote.
Thank you.
That sounds like a good spread. Covers, I think, a lot of the community.
Yeah.
And then my conversation to him will evolve around the dates and times. Typically, the interviews will happen on an evening where you'll have the very first meeting. Actually, you'll meet, I believe, with Mr. Hardy, who will be doing the search. And he'll kind of go over things with you, talk about, you know, devising questions, what you don't want you want to ask. And then the night of the interview, depending on how many candidates you have, whether it's five, ten, will determine how many nights you meet consecutively to do the interviews. But most likely, those will be two to two and a half hours each night, usually starting at seven and in between nine and nine-thirty. And he'll give me those dates and you, if you are going to participate, you would need to be available all of those evenings in order to fully participate in the process. So I guess what we'll be doing is once I get the dates from him, should be tomorrow, I'll be sending out a letter. I'll be forwarding it to Christine that will come from me, asking any community member, staff member, you know, faculty member, whoever wants to participate, to send me an email stating just that, that they want to be involved and with their information so that we can select a search committee moving forward. So I don't know if you have any more questions or concerns regarding that.
Lynn, I had a quick question. This is the same process that Plainville used when Mr. H was hired. I think it was Mike Malone. Am I correct?
Correct, yep. Yep, and actually, I don't know about who was in charge as the field director for Mr. Malone's. Because that was pre me, but Jim Hardy is the exact field director that did superintendentations. So if there is nothing else there, does anyone have any I know I am any other item that is not anticipated at the time of the posting?
I have a question regarding just procedure for the schools, if I may. Mr. H, just my own curiosity, if I have to go into the school, I want to make sure I'm in compliance. Does the reduction of the mask requirement affect the public who comes into the school as well? They're not required. So I don't know if that applies.
They're fully vaccinated.
No, you are correct. I mean, it's mad. The new mask policy basically says you don't have to wear a mask.
So the public comes in for a a reason to be in the school. They don't need a mask either.
That's correct.
Good enough. Thank you.
Regardless of vaccination status, correct?
Correct.
And actually, going off of that. So I know because of COVID, we've, you know, haven't been having volunteers in the classrooms. Are those going to be restarted?
I I expect that they will. Let me get together with the with the principals. You know, just to get things done in an organized fashion. We haven't had any in quite a while. And as you know, in the past, we've always made sure we go through fingerprinting and all of that. So those are things that we just need to discuss and get organized, but I certainly anticipate that that will be happening in the future.
Excellent. I think it's just going to be a a slow, you know, rollout process, get things set, you know, in the school and then I'm sure once they are ready, they'll send out communication. The teachers will be glad to have the volunteers.
Yeah, I'm sure. That'll be great, yeah. But I know a lot of parents, a lot of community members are are very excited at getting that back too. So this this is all good news all around, I think.
Thanks, Chen. Does anyone else have anything to add at this time? If not, I will open it up to any comments from citizens and our faculty. Please remember to state your name and address before you speak. Please also remember that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals in the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Michelle, do we have anyone that wants to make a comment?
Yes, people are very happy to want to volunteer. They're ready to go.
I believe Christina has her hand up.
He does.
All right, can you? I don't see her, so I can someone unmute her, please?
I could try.
Am I here? Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you. It's like that commercial.
The host had to unmute me, so. I don't know if I missed it because it's like bedtime and everything around here. It's a little crazy. So I don't know if I missed other COVID product. Did we talk? Did you guys talk about other COVID things like spacing, the windows? You did?
Yes.
Sorry.
No, he did. He had just explained that that's going to be something that's, you know, goes away, that we're slowly going to roll ourselves into kids not wearing masks and getting kids closer and furniture moving, which people have volunteered to come in and move. Remember that, Mr. H, write that down.
You know I'm there. Let me know. Thank you, guys.
Does anyone else have their hand raised?
See anybody at this time?
There was a question in the comment from Brian Foley.
Yep.
Our teacher about how will the candidates for superintendent be chosen?
How will the candidates be? Okay, so we're going to have, we as the school committee are going to appoint a search committee. And the search committee will consist of thirteen people, eleven people, two alternates. They will get together. They will meet with Mr. Hardy. You will go through, I believe, resumes. You will identify candidates that you want to interview. They will then interview the candidates and they choose between like three to three to ten or whatever, but when they when they narrow down the candidates, it'll be like three to five that they will present to the school committee. And then we will make the selection as a school committee member. So I don't know if that helps. If if that's exactly what he's asking.
From my own knowledge, just listen to that. So the ultimate decision comes down to the school committee.
Absolutely, yep.
As someone had asked about the how the members of the interview team will be chosen, and I believe Mrs. Caparella that you had talked about. Putting something out there where people would email and ask to be on the committee.
So I I will be having a conversation with Jim Hardy tomorrow. He will give me the dates that he can come into district. Once I get that, I will be sending out an email or a, I will actually have Mrs. Medici send it out for me. Email or fire with the information. You're going to, she will forward it out and it will probably be in the principal's newsletters. I'm anticipating our website. Posted on where we post meeting, you know, notes, minutes, agendas. And it will be asking people that are interested in joining the search committee, they need to email me. My my email is L. Caparella, C A P R A R E L L A at plainville.k12.m a.us. You will email me that you are interested in joining the search committee. I will comprise those. I will bring them to the school committee and the school committee will vote as to who they want to sit on the search committee and then it will take place from there.
Will that be the same, Mrs. Caparella, for our teachers? If we have teachers that are interested, would they do the same process or would that be a little different?
And I went over the list. So it's eleven people and I can read the list again to you of what it would comprise of. So then everyone is on the same page. For those that didn't hear or wasn't on. Superintendent Search Screening Committee will, we're looking to consist of two specialists, one teacher, one para. A wood school teacher, a Jackson school teacher, an administrator, a wood school parent, a Jackson school parent, a community member, two school community members, and a PTO member, along with two alternates will be chosen. So thirteen people will be chosen to sit and interview and go through that process to present to the school committee the candidates that they look to bring forward.
One comment that's there is just asking if you could just again explain the policies for general public volunteers in the schools. Just an overview of what is required for volunteers when we are able to have them come back from the schools.
Well, let me get together with the principals this week. We have a meeting coming up on Friday. I've already added it to the agenda. And so we will, they will communicate out through their newsletters in terms of volunteers and how that will work and a timeline for that, too.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else with their hands up, Michelle? I can't see.
No, not, no new comments, no.
Okay, if there is nothing else at this time, I need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing, excuse me. What did I say? Strategies for negotiations with non-union personnel. I want to come out to adjourn. Thank you, Michelle.
Yep, it's also moved.
Thank you, Jenma Second. Caparella, I?
Stop, I?
Baloney Planty?
Justin Alzadron.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Have a good night, stay safe.